Let's recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please note for the record that we do have all councilmen in attendance and therefore a quorum. And I'd like to welcome all the citizens who've come tonight to participate in this meeting. So moving on, we will go into the communications section of the agenda, beginning with items for council, the first order of business or some proclamations.
We have two motorcycle groups here tonight, the Coalition of Clubs and Independent Riders and the Gypsy NC International Crossroads Chapter. I hope I got those two names right. We welcome all of you. There are two proclamations, one for each group. They are identical and so I will read one of them, which reads in part, "Whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related risks, injuries, and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety, and whereas it is the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highways of this country, and it is responsibility of riders and motorcyclists alike to obey all traffic laws and safety rules. Whereas it is important to urge all citizens of our community to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle, and for riders and motorists alike to give each other the mutual respect they deserve, now therefore I, Raleigh McCoy, Mayor of the City of Victoria, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in Victoria, Texas, and urge all residents to do their part to increase safety and awareness in our community."
If the members of each group would come forward, we'll make some presentations. We'll begin with the Coalition of Clubs and Independent Riders. [laughter] [inaudible] 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 We're going to move to item C on the communications to recognize Devin Handy.
His proclamation also is signed by Mayor Raleigh McCoy and it reads in part, "Whereas on March 19th, 2019, the City of Victoria's Boulevard Park was burned in a fire that resulted in a total loss of the playground equipment enjoyed by neighborhood children. Whereas Devin Handy recognized the value of the playground to the community and organized an online fundraiser to aid in replacing the playground equipment. Whereas the City of Victoria appreciates the initiative of Mr. Handy and encourages citizens of all ages to actively engage in projects that'll better their community, now therefore I, Raleigh McCoy, Mayor of the City of Victoria, Texas, do hereby officially declare Tuesday, May 21st, 2019 to be Devin Handy Youth Activism Day in Victoria, Texas, and encourage all citizens to participate in projects to benefit their community wherever they see a need." Congratulations.
Dr. Young would be there?
Yeah, I would.
Dr. Young was instrumental in this proclamation, so I'd ask if he could say a few words.
Too often in life, we get the negatives for everything, particularly our youth. This was an opportunity to tell a story of some of the great youth that we have in our community. As the proclamation read, the fire happened. I happened to receive an email from Mr. Handy stating that he had started this funding account. And I didn't know how much was in it, but was truly blown away by his ideas. Mr. Van Gundy and I got a chance to meet with him at the park and we got to privately thank him, but I thought it was very important that we had an opportunity to publicly thank him for this. The insurance will repair the park, however, the donation that Mr. Handy was so involved
Mr. Lofkin asked at the last meeting to place it under communications.
in instrumental in will actually add another feature to the park, which he actually helped
It's a discussion of the starting time of our regular meetings.
pick out. So again, I wanted to publicly thank you because I thought that was very important.
Well, it's not just the starting time. It's, I want accessibility so people can come before the city council.
So he's 17 years old, he's graduating here. That's right, and going to, that's correct.
And if we do it at 5:00 and we have citizen communication at the very beginning of the meeting, it's hard for people to get here that work 8 to 5.
It's a big week for you, but planning on going to Victoria College with a degree in
In fact, I've sat in the audience before and people will come after the fact.
business, correct? Yeah. So if this is our youth, our future's in good hands.
We don't necessarily have to change the time. We could change when we do citizens' communication or we could change the time of the meeting,
Join me, please?
either one. But I think accessibility to the city council and for the citizens is important, and I
Absolutely.
don't think the way we have it now is the best for citizens to communicate with the council. So I'm open for suggestions if you want to move it in the agenda or you want to change the time. A lot of cities meet at 6:00.
The issue with moving the citizens' communication into a different portion of the agenda wouldn't solve that problem because in all likelihood, we might have voted on something already that they wouldn't have input to. If there's not a public hearing, there's not a chance for them to speak on a particular item. So that's why it sits where it does on the agenda.
But some cities actually have their citizens' communication at the end of the meeting. And I don't think that's a great idea. Get me wrong. I just think there needs to be a, I think 5:00 is too early for people to get here to do citizens' communication. And we should be about accessibility for the citizens. If you want to move it to 5:30, you want to move it to 6:00, either time would be better than 5:00.
I think before we make a decision, we also need to hear from the department heads who are present here and come to these meetings. Is 5:00 good? Is 5:30 better? Is 6:00 better? Do they have time to go home and eat supper before they come or not? So there's a lot more than just changing the times. We probably need some clarification from the department. Is this a good time?
Sure. Well, I'll give you clarification from the city manager, which would extend to the department heads as staff. But obviously, you all know this community better than I do in terms of whether, what time you think the community is better to come out. But I will tell you that I'm also all for accessibility regardless of what that looks like. I've come from a place where the council meeting starts at 6:00 p.m., you know, and often there was nobody that showed up even then also, right? And so there's no guarantee that by moving the start time, you're going to get people to show up. So there's really no way to know for sure. But from staff standpoint, I'm a big believer in customer service. And when you're talking about customer service or accessibility to the client or resident, I'm of the belief that we should do what's most convenient for the customer or the resident as opposed to what's most convenient for us as staff. Ultimately, we're public servants and we'll adjust as needed per the direction of council.
My feeling about it is that certainly there are far more staff that come to our meetings on a regular basis than citizens. It is a big deal when a citizen comes. I don't think most people decide on Monday at, or I'm sorry, on Tuesday at 2:00 in the afternoon that they're going to take off and go to the council meeting. I think they tend to know about it in advance. And if somebody were to call and let us know that they wanted to speak to council, I'm pretty comfortable that council would probably change the agenda if necessary if they couldn't get here at 5:00. And so I think that's kind of a problem that probably doesn't happen that often. There's an impressive number of people that do watch our meetings and I'm very grateful and appreciative of that. But as a result, a lot of people attend our meetings that way. They only need to come to our meetings if they want to address us. And so I'm not sure that it's that major of a problem because again, I think with a phone call, they would probably be able to get a different time. That said though, I'm not necessarily adverse to changing the time to maybe 5:30. I'm looking at the clock, it's already 5:15. We're still in items from council. We haven't gotten anywhere near citizen communication. So we have effectively moved citizen communication a little bit later in the meeting anyway. I mean, I think this is good discussion, but those are my thoughts on it.
Well, I think as we as a group learn to work together and we all know the pulse of the community, especially those of us who just were elected. But I certainly want to work toward being more accessible to the community. And I think that's why I've mentioned before the possibility of having, you know, more work sessions and things where we could participate. And I'm not adverse when we have specific issues that really affect a portion of our community to have a town hall or something and go. Because I know people, for instance, on the South Side, many of them don't have transportation. And if we could meet somewhere in their area, we could do it. But I think it's something that we can all kind of work towards if we as a council choose to be more accessible and then we can rely on Mr. Garza's experience. We've shared a few things, but I don't think it's as easy as I'd hoped it would be because it doesn't take an ordinance to change the time. Did I understand that correctly?
The regularly scheduled meetings are established by ordinance. If you're talking about a special meeting like a town hall meeting, that can be called at the discretion of the mayor.
Right. But I'm talking about a regular meeting. It would have to be done by ordinance, not rearranging what we do within the meeting. But I'm still open to continuing talking about it and as we as a group start working together, move forward toward being more accessible to the public and get your input.
If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to make a suggestion for your consideration. So right now, the citizen communication portion literally is right after items from council. The way that we had it in Kingsville was that we would have items from council, we would have public hearings, since public hearings typically are advertised far in advance at a very specific time. So that's sort of completely different than citizens to be heard. And then we had staff reports and then we had citizens to be heard. So that gives you two more things to talk about that aren't agenda action related prior to you getting to citizens to be heard. So potentially, if we just simply rearrange those items, you know, it'd be 5:30 by the time we get to that without doing it after the action items that are on consent or regular. So just food for thought. I know we're talking about.
The flip side to that is that a lot of citizens provide their communication and then they leave. There's plenty of times that we've moved things up so that the citizens don't have to sit around as long either. And I could see it, someone show up at 5:30, they don't know what time to show up then. Like if they show up at 5:30, they still might be here till 7:30 before citizens' communication. So I think is, my guess would be it was more towards the front so that you knew that you would speak and then you could be out the door if you were done.
Well, I've never been one to be afraid of trying something, especially if we don't have to do an ordinance to do it. If it doesn't work, quit doing it and go back. But I think we can honestly talk it through a little bit more as we get more attuned to working with our new city manager and stuff. Is that a reasonable deal that we just continue to find ways to engage our citizens? I think we're all kind of in favor of that. So.
I would encourage our citizens that are watching and that have an interest or a thought on this, we can all be reached through the city website or you can call the city manager's office. And, you know, if anybody's got any input, citizens that come regularly or citizens that have not been able to come, those are the ones we're especially concerned about.
A regular attendee is now up here.
That's right.
Well, that's the way it works.
Hey, they may not want to do that, you know.
But there were people that would come and citizens' communication had already happened. And that's one of the reasons I bring it up. But could I ask OC a question? If that would be all right? I had asked OC about Channel 15 and 115. If you ever go to your guide, it always says government TV straight across. And a lot of people watch it, but they'd like to know what's on when, not just government TV. And I asked him if he could talk with Suddenlink again.
Well, and we are still trying to find the right, actually, Suddenlink was purchased by Altus. We're still trying to find the right person that can tell us exactly how we can do that. We do know it is an interactive service and we thought we had gotten it kind of in the role with Suddenlink, but really since they were purchased, we have not been able to establish any sort of contact with the person that would do it. But we are working on it and hopefully by the next meeting, maybe we'll have some progress on that. We have gone through their tech support to really find somebody that's kind of a regional manager there that we think we can get some answers from. He hasn't returned our calls yet.
I know that not everybody has access to the internet, but could you explain how they can watch the meetings that way too? Because those are more or less on demand if you want to watch them and you have access to the internet. How do they get to those?
Yeah, the City of Victoria, we actually have three YouTube channels. One of them is Victoria Public Meetings and that is all the public meetings that we offer. City Council, Planning Commission, Parks Commission Meeting are all on there and they're available. We also have an Explore Victoria YouTube site for the CVB. And we also have Victoria Texas Videos, basically for, if you will, projects that are reflective of the community, from the cultural arts to day in the life of code enforcement, how to fix a pothole that we showed in here, those types of videos. But YouTube, just search for Victoria Texas Videos and Victoria Texas Public Meetings.
If there's no further.
I have two items. First one is I want to welcome our new city manager, Jesus Garza.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to have you here. Really looking forward to working with you. Real excited about your new tenure and your new job. Second one is just a quick update on House Bill 1627. If you remember, we did a proclamation for that probably back in February. And it got filed on February 12th. It was passed by the House on April 18th. It was passed by the Senate. Oh, and I think that vote was 146 to 1 nay and 2 abstained and the Senate passed it 31 to 0 on the 10th of May. And it was sent to the governor last week on the 14th of May. That House bill takes us off of the affected counties list and gives us back local control of our codes. So it's a veto-proof majority that passed it. And so just waiting for the governor's office to send it to the Secretary of State's office. I want to thank Representative Morrison, Senator Cole-Course, and my partner in crime on it, Mr. Lesec. Went up there with me both times to testify in the committee hearings and did a fantastic job representing the city of Victoria. And thank you all for y'all's proclamation too. It helped, so.
Great.
That's all I got.
So it goes into effect immediately?
It goes into effect immediately as soon as it's registered with the Secretary of State.
Thanks for all your work on that.
You're welcome.
I have an item. I'm using this as public information. I think we brought this up before, but there is a lot of trash flying around in our city that didn't used to fly around, or maybe I didn't notice it. But I was driving down Main Street the other day and there was so much trash that I was behind a pickup truck and a piece of paper stuck on the back of the truck for a period of time. And there was just paper flying. I've seen trash on Houston Highway, especially on the east side, and I've also seen it on Navarro. And unfortunately, those are pretty fast speed roads and I can't quite find the place to pull over and pick up the trash myself, but I am going to start doing that. And I just want to encourage everybody to please help us pick up the trash and try to keep it out of either the beds of the trucks or wherever it's flying from. I know that we may have a report on it or we've had some and I know the city's working on it, but citizens can do a lot to keep our city clean.
And on that subject, I was approached by some members of one of the Lions Club that was looking for ways they could help the city in projects. Maybe that's a good idea. I've asked Mr. Van Gundy to look into it and he's already come up with a few ideas. So maybe charging our citizens with, you know, some public service type things would be a good idea.
It makes a huge difference. My family and another family a couple of weeks ago went and cleaned up Vine Street in the Outfall area. And in fact, along with Mr. Handy, there was a 12-year-old from Patty Welder that was on a scooter and stopped and spent about two hours with us cleaning it up. I did happen to call his principal and Dr. Shepherd and let him know the quality of students that they have. It was pretty amazing and the pictures before and after say a lot.
And on that topic, if you don't mind, to get an update real quick on some of the grants, I'm not sure how in tune council is on those grants related to that topic.
We've, in the process of starting something called Tech Pride Victoria, I've mentioned it to council. We talked about it a little bit during the budget. We've recently received two grants, one from Dow and one from Keep Texas Beautiful that amount to over $10,000. We're working on our advertising now with OC and his group. We've got contracts that are coming through to me from different outlets. We're doing, if council will remember, we adopted Two Miles of Highway, Loop 463 between the mall or between Navarro and Main Street. We did a cleanup there. I think it was the second, our first or second week in April, we'll do one quarterly on a Saturday, so anyone who wants to volunteer. Dow has approached us about doing some cleanups. So all these things are kind of in the works. But I'd also remind the citizens that we have, if you show up at the landfill or the compost facility with an unsecured or untarp'd load, you're going to pay an extra $25. So we hit people for that out at the landfill. Also, we've worked with PD and the SO's office to make sure that we're keeping an eye on those things. I mean, we can't, you know, we're never going to catch everybody. Keep Texas Beautiful says if one person that lives in Texas picks up one piece of trash every day, Texas would be completely clean. So that's an important thing to remember.
And more specifically, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but those grant funds are intended specifically to go towards marketing and awareness in the form of billboards or other items to exactly do what you suggest, which is educate the public on helping us keep the city looking great.
As well as our education programs with VASD.
But I am not advocating that people stop in the lanes of traffic and jump out.
Probably not real safe. We have to follow very specific guidelines just to do the cleanup for the highway cleanup. Very specific. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items from council? If not, I'd ask anyone that wants to pull anything from the consent agenda to do so now.
That would be an item from council.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, yeah, from item for council. So it gives them time to prepare if they need to.
I'd like to put an agenda item on the next agenda. I'd like the sales, report on the Sales Tax Development Corporation, what it does, what the promise of the voters was, what it's done since we instituted it back in the 90s, and what it can do. Just a work session about it so we could fully understand what it's all about.
Is that amended in 2013 as well?
There was some sort of, I've never read the amendment, but there was some sort of amendment. Yes.
Anything else from council?
I don't have anything today. Not now. I'll do it later.
Okay. If not, we'll move into citizens' communication. Anyone that has anything to bring before council, we do ask that if you're going to speak to something that's under the public hearings, that you reserve your comments for the public hearings.
I'd like to note that it's 5:28.
Yes, you may.
Actually, I have a question. First off, my name is Paul Morrison and I appreciate this opportunity to speak to the council and our new city manager and Mr. Mayor. And in answer to your first question, no, we're not related. The mayor and I both knew Jeannie when she was Jeannie Williams, not Jeannie Morrison. My question pertains to an item that's occurring later on in the agenda. And I've tried to follow the renovations that are anticipated for Ben Wilson. And in the recent coverage in the Victoria Advocate, they mentioned a figure of $7 million that has been estimated to be the cost of making all the changes that they plan to make. My concern is, and this falls both for the city and for the University of Houston, Victoria, my concern is that has adequate, or my question is, I should say, has adequate attention been paid to drainage and improvement of the drainage? I'm old enough to remember when Ben Wilson was new. And almost immediately, the first heavy rain, it flooded. From what I can determine, it has continued to be the same since the 60s. About three or four weeks after Harvey, I attempted to cut through there one Sunday afternoon after a heavy rainfall, got the airline headed towards the Houston Highway and found a lake and had to circumvent the whole thing because I know how deep that was. I'm just curious, and maybe you'll answer this in later discussion, has, is there going to be a major
My question pertains to an item that's occurring later on in the agenda, and I've tried to follow the renovations that are anticipated for Ben Wilson. And in the recent coverage in the Victoria Advocate, they mentioned a figure of $7 million that has been estimated to be the cost of making all the changes that they plan to make. My concern is, and this falls both for the city and for the University of Houston, Victoria, my concern is that has adequate, or my question is, I should say, has adequate attention been paid to drainage and improvement of the drainage? I'm old enough to remember when Ben Wilson was new, and almost immediately, the first heavy rain, it flooded. From what I can determine, it has continued to be the same since the '60s. About three or four weeks after Harvey, I attempted to cut through there one Sunday afternoon after a heavy rainfall, got to Airline, headed towards the Houston Highway, and found a lake and had to circumvent the whole thing because I know how deep that was. I'm just curious, and maybe you'll answer this in later discussion, has, is there going to be a major renovation to drainage in that section? Because if it isn't, all the renovations that are planned are really going to go for naught the first time we have four inches of rain in an hour or two, which will happen. Is this the right time, or should I just sit down and wait for an answer?
Sure, we can comment.
Because you can, there's no obligation.
I think that will be a source of discussion.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. Any other items from citizens' communication? If not, then we'll move on into the items for public hearings.
Item C1 is an ordinance providing for the extension of certain boundary limits of the city of Victoria, Texas, and the annexation of territory consisting of approximately 74 acres of land near the intersection of the proposed Placido Benavides Drive and Salem Road, adopting a service plan for the territory, providing for publication and savings, and declaring an effective date.
I would open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone that wants to speak to this matter, please step forward. Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing.
I move to accept item C1.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept item C1. All those in favor, well, is any discussion on the matter? No discussion? I'd ask all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes.
Item C2 is an ordinance granting to the Victoria Electric Cooperative the right privilege and franchise to construct, install, extend, remove, replace, abandon, operate, and maintain its facilities within the public rights-of-way of the city of Victoria, Texas for the transportation, delivery, sale, and distribution of electrical energy, containing provisions related to the foregoing subject, providing for savings, and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to adopt C2. Oh, I'm sorry. Public hearing.
Pardon. I'd like to open the public hearing on this matter. Anyone that wants to speak to this, please step forward. Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing.
Then I'll make that move.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve C2. Any discussion on the matter? Who voted, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Matter passes.
Mayor, as a procedural matter, I want to point out to council, the next time you see this item, it will be on second reading. Unlike most ordinances, we do not combine the second and third reading of franchise ordinance, so we'll actually be reading this one three times. That moves us into the consent agenda, and there are six items on the consent agenda tonight that will be approved by a single vote. They are, first, the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of May 7, 2019. Second, an ordinance amending the 2018-2019 City Victoria General Fund budget to provide funding for the retirement of the city manager and expenses associated with the recruitment and relocation of and of replacement for that position, providing for savings and declaring an effective date. Third is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with the Texas Health Center PA for first responder fiscal and health surveillance program in an estimated amount of $40,000 and declaring an effective date. Fourth is an amended resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for and, if awarded, accept funding from the 2019 Homeland Security Grant Program, project number 3795105, in the amount of $59,950 with no requirement for city matching funds for hazardous materials chemical identification device to be used by Victoria Fire Department and declaring an effective date. Item five is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Victoria Electric Cooperative Incorporated to provide electrical service for the streetlights within Placido Benavides Street Extension Project in the amount of $276,155.35 and declaring an effective date. The sixth is a resolution awarding fiscal year 2019 Sanitary Sewer Line Glanny Project to CSI Consolidated LLC doing business as Ames Companies for their low business, their low bid of $95,224.25, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Move into action items, please.
Item E1 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal cooperation agreement with the University of Houston System for the Ben Wilson Corridor Improvement Project to include the sale of a portion of Ben Wilson Street Right-of-Way and city construction of improvements to the remainder of Ben Wilson Street between Red River Street and Airline Road and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt E1.
That's the one we were going to do, if you'd like to adjourn into executive session to discuss. I think that was an item that we were going to adjourn into executive session to discuss.
And now would be an appropriate time to do that, if you'd like.
So do I have to withdraw my motion?
No, we have a motion on the floor to discuss it, and part of that discussion can take place in executive session. Because this is a real estate item, it qualifies for executive session, and we have posted that on the agenda. And so if it's the mayor's desire, we can do that now.
All right.
So grab my announcement. City council will recess at this point for executive session on the 21st day of May 2019 at 5:37 PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows, Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property interests due to the fact that a deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city with negotiations with a third party. Thank you. The city council has completed its executive session on the 21st of May 2019 at 6:08 and is now reconvening in open session.
Right. We have a motion on the floor on action item E1. We have a motion to approve in a second. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, if I may, for clarification, a couple clarifying points. One, related to drainage. I know there was a comment from a concerned resident about drainage and its relation to this project. For clarification, this project will not solve the drainage issue on Red River and Ben Wilson. The goal of this project is to not make the drainage situation any worse. So the goal of the project is consistent with our drainage ordinances and language that conveys not to make it any worse. So that's the goal of this project, and so I think it's important that the public is understanding of what it is and what it isn't. The second clarifying point is that the funding for this project is coming from UHV ultimately and not our localized public dollars. If there were localized public dollars, I'm sure it'd be a different conversation about priorities with drainage, but because it's not localized public dollars, the focus of the project is merely in improving the stretch of Ben Wilson for community development and pedestrian safety purposes.
Do we have a final design yet from the University of Houston?
No. So the design will come through the design process. So this agreement, once approved, the next phase would be to select a firm, and there is a committee that'd be involved with the conversation for the design. As outlined in the timeline, the estimated timeline for completion for the design is the end of this calendar year. So at that time would be the specific design, which would incorporate the stormwater components to address not making the drainage issue any worse, ideally.
All right. And it would address the traffic concerns that we've had in, under the Freeze Nichols or the Nichols Freeze survey, it showed that there was not going to be an impediment to traffic. Am I correct, Donald?
Right.
That Freeze, it was not going to show any type of traffic impediment, and particularly to emergency traffic, because we have stipulated or showed concerned, concern that a shoulder on that stretch for main traffic to pull over when emergency traffic is coming through.
Yes, sir. I believe that the, that the, that that study did show that there would be very minimal impacts to traffic there. However, we can take into account all those design elements when we're, when we're putting this design together. So that can definitely be looked at again, so, and brought back to council so that y'all can look at it.
And at that time, we'll have a say-so. We'll have our opinions heard, and the design can be altered at work.
I mean, obviously, we want to make sure that this is a project that everybody can, can get behind, and so absolutely, it's important for your input. And ultimately, as discussed in the agreement, there'll be a committee, and, so absolutely.
So it's my understanding that in the selection of the engineering firm, that a drainage study would be a very important part of that contract.
Sure. That's duly noted. Yes, sir.
And that if it's extraordinary, the measures that you would have to take, it would probably affect the budget, which would potentially bring us all back to the table anyway. So I think the importance is that to whoever is selected for that project, have a pretty good resume in drainage studies.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to explain my vote on this before we vote. While I applaud UHV for putting this project together, and I think it's imperative that we have some type of solution, and this is a good solution for pedestrian safety, I don't agree with the way that the pricing came together. I've stated this before, when it first came up, the city is essentially giving up and donating assets to the university in the form of land and an improvement upon that land, which is the roadway. I look at it from a business perspective, and I think the citizens deserve to be compensated for those assets, much like Victoria College was. They didn't donate their property to UHV. They had every option to do that, just as well as we do. And for that reason, I think the project isn't a good deal for the citizens. It's shy by about $2 million of cash payment to the city, and I'll vote no on it. Any further discussion?
Because we're working on the preliminaries, I was going to vote against it, but I will vote for it. But if it comes back where I'm not satisfied with the contract, I have voted no in the past, so based on what we come back with, I will decide then. But today, I will vote for the study, since it's going to be a study.
At this stage, I'll vote for it also.
I've been in favor of this from the start, and I continue to be, and I'd just like to state for some clarification, that there are other situations, and quite a few of them, where we do, if you want to call it donate, but where we do have city involvement and city reimbursement, other types of city donations to various projects. And so while I recognize your concern, I don't want it to be thought that this is the, a one-shot deal or the only time that this situation has occurred.
I'm a yes on it. There, the drainage issue is a big issue, and I do feel that with, with proper vetting and engineering, that we'll, we'll know more answers. But at this point, I'd like to go forward and, and look at the engineering and make sure that the citizens are, are going to maintain a level of safety in that area.
I feel the same way. We need to go forward and then see what the drainage study and the design that come back, and if that's acceptable, then we, then we have to make a decision. But we need to go forward right now.
Point of clarification.
Yes.
Is there really a vote after the engineering study or engineering design?
The contract doesn't call for a formal vote on those issues, but what I'm hearing from council is that they would like, that you guys would like to have some feedback, you'd like to have that presented to you for further discussion. The contract does not require a formal vote of council after this stage.
Well, I think we need to have a formal vote on that issue.
And you might want to make a motion to amend.
Yeah, I'll make a, a motion to amend the contract that we come back as a group and discuss the findings of the engineering study.
I second it.
For clarification, what I'm understanding is that you want to make a motion that would potentially still approve the contract, provided that it is amended, to allow another opportunity for council to approve after they see the design. So it's essentially a conditional approval. Why don't we phrase it that way? We'll say that you're, if I may state for you.
Please.
That you're making a motion to amend our resolution to make the approval of this contract conditioned upon council's subsequent approval of the design of the, of the roadway.
I couldn't have said it better.
I'm sure you could have.
Well, I don't really feel like I'm the person that should be approving the design. And my understanding of the contract was that there is that design and that approval that comes from the city, but through the staff. And, you know, I, for one, I'm not going to go get a degree in drainage or engineering between now and the end of the year to feel like I can make an intelligent vote. I really would trust our public works department, our legal department, or our city manager to make that determination. I would like a report, but I don't see any reason to amend the contract and impose ourselves. And if we do that, frankly, we're not approving the contract at this point. And I disagree with that position.
I can't approve the contract without the amendment.
What was that?
I cannot approve this contract without that amendment. Whether we're experts or not, we will get a report back, and then we can decide as, as a city council if we need to go forward with the project. The amendment, to me, is important.
For, if I may, just for discussion's sake, so I understand the conversation related to the amendment, but ultimately, let's say for argument's sake, that's the case. In essence, what would, recall that at the end of the day, this is also a real estate-related transaction, and so.
Have to be approved.
I understand. But my point is that ultimately, the funding is coming from UHV, and so I just want to be very clear that you all understand what, in essence, this, this agreement and amendment is doing, which is conveying to UHV, who is paying for this improvement, that the design of this project is dependent on final, I wouldn't necessarily call it final approval, but at least support officially from this body that isn't paying for this improvement. Just some food for thought, because I do think there's benefit to considering simply, hopefully feeling reassured from my standpoint as city manager, that I will definitely ensure that your input is considered, that you're definitely kept in the loop of everything that is going on. That's what I meant when you asked your question, was that I would definitely, absolutely, we can even present it in the setting of this council meeting, you know, so that it's transparent and it's public, and there's discussion, and you have input. And so there's opportunities for you to provide input without it necessarily having to be a formalized vote. Now, ultimately, that's your decision, but I just want you to feel confident and reassured that it doesn't necessarily have to go to that extent for you to have an opportunity to provide input.
Well, basically, what we're talking about, to not make the situation worse, is underground retention or detention, depends on how it drains. So at the point in the, in the engineering study, if, if the engineer is determined that that's going to take a mighty large structure to make it no worse, I would submit that it's probably going to affect the budget considerably. So I think at that time, that it's going to open up another discussion on the matter, because I don't think anything compels us to move forward if that engineering study shows that we have a problem. Is that a safe assumption?
There are exit points within the structure for, if the budget, if the project cannot be done within the appropriate dollar figures, then we have the opportunity to confer with UHV at that stage in order to revise the design so that it can meet those design parameters. Once we have had that discussion, if we're unable to reach agreement at that point, then we have an exit. we have an exit point out of the contract where we could potentially terminate the contract without penalty, get out from underneath the contract, and return to U H V any of the engineering services fee that we have not yet spent.
So nothing, since we, under the contract, are responsible for the engineering of the project, correct?
That's right.
And our engineering study tells us that, that it might worsen the situation, then we need to go back, determine what would fix it, and then go back.
And have a dialogue with U H V at that point with regards to potentially revising the scope of the project in order to address those concerns. And if we're unable to reach agreement at that point, then the city or the university could choose to terminate the contract.
Okay, so we've got five lanes of impervious cover right now, today. Five lanes of paved road. What we're gonna end up with is two lanes of paved road, some grass, some sidewalk, the center median with grass, some openings. Now, the last time I looked, grass absorbs water better than streets do. We've got five lanes of pavement now. We're proposing three or two, depending on the location, of paving. I find it difficult to grasp how that is going to make the drainage situation worse, such that we feel like we need to come back and have another vote on it. And, and I'm just going back to my old days on the planning commission where I was asked, and when a subdivision was approved, what that meant for drainage. And I said, everybody has front yards and back yards. So we're going, we're not going the other direction here. We're not going from a grassy area to a paved area. We're going the other direction.
I'd argue that you'd at least negate it with the additional buildings and parking that's being developed right now on Ben Wilson.
But this project is for the road.
I realize that, but there's new buildings that were lots facing Ben Wilson prior to this project. It's gonna add more impervious cover to the area. It's not gonna be able to soak in. It's gonna go towards Ben Wilson. I'd say it's, if anything, it balances it out. And I would say probably there's more paving going in now than what's there now on this roadway.
There are retention ponds in those new buildings. Again, I'm not the engineer, but I can see, I can see that there are holes in the ground, that it doesn't look like anything's gonna be built in. And that's to hold water now.
Hence the need for a study.
Absolutely, absolutely. But I, I still think that I, I'm comfortable trusting our staff to make these determinations without it having to come back to us.
He who tells, are we, was there a?
There was a motion made.
Second to amend?
Well, I think that, pardon me, but I think that that makes it very easy. If staff comes up and gives us the green, you know, the green light and the thumbs up, then the vote appears very easy.
So again, is there a?
We have a motion on the floor to amend, to make it a conditional approval, which would require me to go back and, and propose an alternate, a revision to the contract to U H V.
Was it seconded?
It would, Mark seconded that. And Mark, for clarification of the record, we clarified the amendment after your second. Are you still comfortable with your second?
Comfortable.
Okay, very good. Then we have a motion and a second.
All right, so is there any more discussion on the, on the motion to amend in this? If not, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion to amend?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I believe that's a four-three vote in favor of the amendment. So that amendment passes. So.
I voted for.
Yes, ma'am.
I voted against and so did.
And, and Rowley and Jan. Yes.
Against.
Correct.
So now we will move to any further discussion on the amended motion? The original motion is amended. If not, we'll call for a vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I believe that's a six-one vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
Takes us to item E two, which is a resolution suspending the June 5th, 2019 effective date of A E P Texas requested rate change to permit the city time to study the request and to establish reasonable rates, approving cooperation with cities served by A E P Texas, and authorizing intervention in the A E P Texas requested rate change proceeding before the commission, hiring Lloyd Gosslink attorneys and consulting services to negotiate with the company, directing any necessary litigation and appeals, requiring the reimbursement of city's rate case expenses, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel, and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt item E two.
Second.
Been a motion, a second to adopt item E two. Any discussion?
Mayor, if I may, I'm prepared to, to give an overview of this process, which is complicated and unusual. Some of you have been through this process with other rate changes before, and that may be unnecessary. So I'll leave that to your discretion.
For the benefit of the public?
All right.
Go ahead.
So A E P, as you know, is a regulated energy utility. They control and build the transmission and distribution lines. They do not sell electricity that you, as a consumer, buy. They get paid on your electrical bill by various surcharges that are applied. Those rates are set and controlled initially by us, the city of Victoria, and then ultimately approved by the P U C at the state level. In order to change those rates, in order to recoup expenses that A E P incurs, they have to file what they've done here, which is a rate change case. It comes to us initially for approval, and then later gets approved by the P U C. We retain what's called original jurisdiction, requiring them to come to us for approval first. What this resolution seeks to do is to suspend the implementation of those new rates for 90 days, to give the city time to hire outside consultants who will review the proposed rates and make recommendations about potential changes to those rates. Typically, what happens, and what we expect to happen in this case, is that we will join together with all of the other cities that have retained original jurisdiction, hire a firm known as Lloyd Gosslink out of Austin, who will review all of the materials that have been submitted, and they will look to ensure that those rate increases appropriately reflect the costs that A E P has incurred. Typically, what happens is that the law firm will propose some revisions. They'll consider that to be a settlement of a potential rate case. And then if A E P agrees to that settlement, the city agrees to that settlement, then those revised rates can go into effect. So what this resolution tonight is doing is suspending the implementation of the rate increase requested by A E P long enough for us to conduct that study. And once that study is completed, we would bring back another resolution to actually approve or deny the rates. I hope that helps clarify this issue.
Any other discussion from council?
I'm sorry, just mean, if I may also, just one more thing, say that V Strauss is here from A E P as their representative. And if I have said anything wrong, I'm sure she'll stand up and correct me. It's good to see you, V.
Okay, so the proposed increase right now that we're showing on the CM one could possibly come back either higher or lower?
That's correct.
Depending on what the, the study comes back or?
That's correct. The, the proposed rate, just for the public's interest, is a system-wide distribution rate increase of 38.3 million and a system-wide transmission rate decrease of 3.16 million. Those two things, of course, would net each other out to some extent.
Okay. Are we considered in the central division or in the north division?
We're part of the center division.
Okay.
As you're seeing in the explanation, they currently have two divisions of rates. And at the direction of the P U C, they are rolling those into a single rate that all Texans served by A E P will pay. And for residential customers, that would result in a proposed rate increase for us here in the central division of $4.75 and a potential rate decrease of $5.01 in the north division. I can tell you that I've talked with the outside council. We're proposing to hire at Lloyd Gosslink, and that is one of the issues that they want to focus on, is to ensure that that's an appropriate distribution of the rate assessment.
Okay. So we won't see it for another 90 days, then, once we get the report?
Potentially for 90 days. The new date would be September 3rd, 2019. We would need to get something resolved by then.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion or any questions for Ms. Gosslink?
Strauss.
Ms. Strauss.
We appreciate the council's consideration. We know it's complicated. So, but definitely, suspension is okay with us, with A E P here directly, in, in 90 days if action's taken. I think it's the 90 days begin on June 5th, so 90 days from that time.
I believe that's correct.
If you get a rate increase, can you straighten some of these leaning poles?
You got it.
Just thought I'd throw that in.
I hear you. In a perfect world.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, if there's no further discussion, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Thank you, Thomas.
Item E three is a resolution granting a variance to section 21-82A2, which requires a 50-foot minimum lot width for a single-family residential lots to allow a 40-foot wide, 44-foot wide lot to be platted for a single-family residential construction on a property located at 4303 Hanselman Road, owned by Jehu Aliel Garcia Quevara, and declaring an effective date.
Someone?
Second. Been moved and seconded to accept item E three. Is there any discussion on this matter? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of item E three?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
E four is a resolution awarding the Crestwood Drive reconstruction project phase one to Brandon Paving Company for their low bid of $4,136,157.46, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
Move to accept item E four.
Second. Been moved and seconded to accept item E four.
Just for clarification.
Any discussion?
Was, was this table, don't we have the motion on the floor from the last meeting?
Yes, ma'am, you're right. If we wanted to, to be strict about it, you're right.
I'm fine with it, but I just.
Now, we're doubly assured that.
That's true. I don't want to have a hanging motion that doesn't get approved.
I think the issue at the time was about the length of time on the project.
That's correct.
Perhaps somebody would.
And, and perhaps I should start the discussion, because when it was tabled, I requested additional time to study the issue of whether or not city council could award it to the shortest time period rather than the lowest bid. I did complete that research. I emailed you all my response. And the, the simple answer is no, we may not. We must accept the lowest bid, in part because of the way this project was proposed. It is certainly possible that cities can choose alternate construction methods for some of their projects. We did not in this case. And if we are choosing to award by sealed bids on a street project, we must award to the low bid.
Mr. Garzen, can you please review our front inspects? And I know I've talked to Mr. Guush about it before. As we have a bunch of road construction coming, coming up, I'd really like to have the flexibility to look at it for the best value for the city.
Absolutely.
This eight, eight-month delay is, is tough, but I understand. The analysis, I agree with it, reading back through the state law, so.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
And can we also add that we would like to specify the amount of time that we would like the project done? And that way they could bid, so they know how, you know, just give them a time limit. I'm saying six months, eight months, you know, just based on, we're not gonna take a year and a half to do a project that could possibly be done, you know, in one year. And that way, they, they would know ahead of time if they even wanted to bid on the project.
And, and if I may, just to add to that input, because of these requirements to go low bid, it's also not uncommon for cities to incorporate in their RFPs incentives for early completion. So you still go with an early bid, but you incorporate incentives to the contractor or penalties if they don't complete by a certain timeframe. And so we'll certainly look at whatever options are best practices and reasonable to ensure that in the future, we get best value.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Is it also a thought, though, that, I mean, we're seeing 600 days here, and so we're all envisioning that they're gonna break ground, tear the place up, and 600 days later, it's gonna be finished, when we know it could be sooner? Isn't it possible that they're not even gonna start on day one and that they may start several months later? And so while we would like to have the project done, the inconvenience that we're all concerned about may not be there for that length of time. Is that a?
Yeah. Do you have any insights on that?
The, the only thing I can speak to on that is that, that we issue a notice to proceed, and that's when the 600 days start. And at, at that time, it's, it's really the contractor discretion if they get in and they, they start to work right away, or if they choose to wait until all their materials come in, or, or it's really up to the contractor. But, you know, the 600 days is their limit. When, when they start is really up to them.
That, I guess that's just something that I'd really like us to pay attention to, because we are all now concerned about it. But to me, it's a slightly different issue if it's torn up for 600 days versus if it's only torn up for 360 within that 600-day period.
But we don't have any control over that the way our, our specifications are. I'd rather see us on the front end specify what they have to do for submittal time, what submittal review's gonna be, how many days it's gonna be until they start actually breaking ground.
Well, there's so many tools you can use. You can make them submit a schedule for the project, then that helps the city determine when the testing needs to be done. It, much of it hinges on what you put in the bid package. I mean, you can make the, you can express the urgency to get started in a, in a deal, and you can specify that you must be willing to start, you know, within so many days of, of issuance of a, of a notice to proceed. So I think it's just a matter of going through, like you've requested, Mr. Bultnight, a, an entire study, and I think we've already discussed that, of the way that we put our bid packages together, and quite frankly, give Public Works more tools in your basket to, to control a lot of this stuff. The, the whole key to most of it is, you must be very clear in what you, what you put in that RFP, and then you have to stick to it. So I think that's what we find ourselves in tonight. We're sticking to what the RF, the bid package required.
Yeah, and speaking for, for the legal department, it's part of this project assignment. I think this discussion has been incredibly helpful to show that city council is concerned about issues that city council has not previously said they're concerned about. And so I'm listening to all of this discussion, and there are certainly ways that those, those ideas can be incorporated into the contract, into the, the bidding review process. And I, and I, I'm hearing what council is saying about the importance of those issues. I think we'll be able to bring you back something better.
While I don't disagree with the good intentions of this discussion, I also don't want us to end up with higher bids without knowing it, because we've decided arbitrarily that this has to start or has to be finished within 540 days or 300 days. And this particular contractor is looking at it and saying, well, if I could just have another 30 days, I'd be able to work this crew over here and here, and the price would be significantly different, and we would not be aware of that. So again, this is good intention, and I, I like the discussion, but I don't want us to put ourselves in a box the other way.
And I think part of the analysis, too, should be there are costs involved in managing projects. And I'm sure that Mr. Garzen is, would take that into consideration, too, when you put these packages together. And there's also cost to our citizens, especially on streets, that affect businesses. So then it becomes a matter of, of really harming businesses. But I think, I think you can do a comprehensive kind of study of it, because each one won't necessarily be that, you necessarily will not have a common template for every situation. What we need to do is develop, have an arsenal of tools to use at the appropriate time in the way that we put these packages together with all of this knowledge of what we want to try to achieve.
Somebody had also brought up a grading system for us to select the, you know, the winning bid. So maybe we could use that, too. I don't know, you could incorporate it in some fashion. We do that whenever we select auditors and things like that.
I would just briefly say that ultimately, you know, I would ask that, give me some time to really just evaluate everything that we're doing, because I assure you that part of my approach to the assessment that I'm doing overall is to ensure that we're getting best value, not only with bids, but just in general, and that we're working as efficiently as possible. Obviously, I'm hearing that ultimately, you want to ensure that things are occurring in a timely and best value manner. And so I assure you that that's my responsibility. And so I assure you that that's my responsibility to ensure that that occurs. So give me that opportunity to look at those things. And in the future, if you have some concerns about inefficiencies, feel free to approach me on it because absolutely, that's my responsibility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on E4? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Let's see, what's the next item?
Capital improvements Work Session.
Okay, capital improvements Work Session. Does council think we need to take a little break before the Work Session? If not, let's adjourn for five minutes or so?
Recession.
Recession.
There is. Yeah, so.
That's right. You've got to post another one. Like, oh, come back in 72 hours.
And have our capital improvements Work Session. And I'd like to make it clear, this is simply a Work Session. It's for informational purposes to council, to ask questions of the C I P. No action will be taken by council tonight.
Matt, ask for a point of clarification on that. Would one of the possible actions that come out of this is reshuffling of priorities of the council?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I think that what the mayor means is that we're not approving the individual projects. Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Or anything.
But absolutely, the.
Direction we can give, but not formally approve. I would assume that would come back when it's time to do.
Bid it out, the project, whatever.
Each individual project will be approved at the time.
Well, as a point of clarification, so obviously, staff will go through this plan. And keep in mind, too, that even though it might be a five-year plan, ultimately, the city addresses these things on an annual basis through the budget process. And so the idea is to introduce all of these projects to you today. Staff gets some input so that as part of our budget development process, we can ensure that the projects that are included for the fiscal year '20 budget are consistent with your expectations. And so even when you do get to approving something in the summer, it's not the entire five-year period of this plan. It's merely just the first year. And we certainly are open to feedback and policy direction. And I've had great conversation with staff about just the approach to presenting items to council. And so I ask that you give staff an opportunity to present, go through the presentation, and we'll be happy to take feedback and questions once he's done going through it. Go for it.
Okay.
All right. Well, good evening. I would like to say that I can make this quick, but I can't promise that, so we're going to just do the best we can. Before we move into our regular C I P, I thought it might be wise to take a few minutes and kind of go over our C I P process for the new council members and a refresher for the ones that have been on, serving for a while, and also for the public. So every year, when we start looking at the C I P, typically around January, December, January, one of the first items that we do is Gilbert will come back with an updated funding list. He'll show where all the fundings are. He looks at previous year's projects. Did they come in high? Did they come in low? Are bonds not shaping up like we thought they were? Did the property tax come down? Whatever it may be. And so we look at that funding availability, and then we start to plug in our projects to it. You know, do we need to move these projects around because the funding shifted? You know, we take some time and we go back through all the estimates for all the projects. You know, have material costs gone up? Do they go down? Are we changing the process that maybe we can save some money? And we take all those items and we update this C I P for those four years, those first four years in that. And for this time, it's 2020 to 2023. So all those projects you've already seen once, we make sure that those all still fit into what we showed you before. If they don't, we adjust them and we talk about them here under some changes. The next thing we do is we look at our new planning window. We review a list of all the projects we have out there we know are needs, and that list is pretty long, and it's growing all the time. One of the things we look at is street rating. When we're talking about streets, you know, that's kind of our main tool for getting it started, where it falls on the list. We also look at the water and wastewater infrastructure needs that may be under those streets or any water-wastewater infrastructure need. We look at the number of work orders. We do visual inspections. Look at test results. We do soil samples on projects. Also take into account traffic counts. And then there may be something that's coming on board from a master plan. Maybe we're meeting a population threshold where we need to start looking at some water infrastructure changes. Take all those things into account before, as we start to put these projects in the new planning window. From there, we have to try to fit them into, all those projects into the different funds, which include general funds, sales tax, bonds, C O G O bonds, water-wastewater fund, and red bonds. Some of the examples of those past projects that we put into there, general fund was typically seal coat maintenance projects and residential street projects, such as the streets in North Heights. That's one of those projects we've been working on for several years, so everybody's pretty well familiar with it. Sales tax, you know, sales tax can be used on infrastructure projects, thoroughfare improvements, utility improvements. When we talk about thoroughfares, we're talking about items such as Crestwood Drive, which is a collector. Also, you know, something like Ball Airport that we did several years ago, which is like a secondary street. You know, again, there's a note on here, you know, we cannot use those sales tax on residential streets. But we can also use sales tax to do some other projects, utility projects, such as our A S R, Aqua Storage and Recovery. We use sales tax for that. And also Water Tower 6, which is going on right now. Those were sales tax funds. C O G O bonds typically used to help fund residential street projects, such as North Heights again. Water-wastewater fund typically used to fund the utility improvements of some of those, utility portions of improvements of some of those major street projects. Again, North Heights. But they can also be used for a whole bunch of other things, such as SCADA improvements, plant improvements, and even engineering fees. And then finally, red bonds, we typically use those on large projects, such as construction of the Odom Street Wastewater Treatment Plant. One last note I have before we move into the regular C I P presentation is that I want council to keep in mind that the C I P is a plan, and plans are made to be changed. So if there's something that y'all want shifted around, just let us know, and we will see what we can do to make that happen.
Could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
All of those funds that you just listed, do any of those require vote or approval?
I think that's a question probably for Gilbert.
Short answer, I hope.
The short answer is your general obligation bonds require a vote.
Which one?
General, the GOs.
GOs. Okay, thank you. Would that have been your answer, too, Mr. Garza?
Yes.
This was a test. We're just checking.
It's okay. I just wasn't sure if there was more context with, I'm not as familiar yet with a lot of these funds yet. So I just wasn't sure if there was more context to the answer, but thank you.
Thank you both.
Okay, so the agenda for night is we're going to review the recommended changes, add the year 2024 C I P window, and then maybe discuss some of the alternative projects, the new alternative projects and other needs that have come on that y'all haven't seen before. And then, of course, there'll be time for discussion and questions at the end. But if you have a question at any time, please stop and ask me. At the end of the presentation, I will be looking for consensus on 2020 and hopefully 2021 projects so that we can start working on phasing those projects out in the next couple of years. All right, so recommended changes, F Y 2019. We've actually already done these changes. We've moved the 2019 Downtown Business District Overlay Project into 2020. And we moved the North Street Phase 1 from the 700 main building railroad track to Navarro, moving that to 2021. And that's simply, we just don't have the available funding for that, is what that is. In 2020, we're adding that Downtown Business District Overlay Project back in. We're reducing the seal coat maintenance project by about $587,000 by removing Red River Heights and also adding Oak Haven and Regency. So that's a net change of minus 587. In addition, when we're talking about the seal coat, I think I brought this to your attention a while back. We're using the Onyx product when we're coming up with these bids. That Onyx came in a little bit lower than your typical double seal. So these prices reflect that change. Where it's typically the same dollar amount, we're able to just kind of move things around, get some more in, and do a little bit more as we move through the year. Move Bridle Ridge Phase 2 to 2021, and then reduce the A S R project by a million dollars. There's actually a couple of changes to that A S R project. One proposing that we reduce that by a million dollars so that we can remove the well rehab portion of that project. Obviously, from what we learned from our last A S R project, well rehab is not the best way to go. So move that million dollars out, do something else with it. Move the entire construction of the new A S R well, which is still proposed for $2.5 million, to 2021. And then during the 2021 window, or year, fund an assessment, which will be done by the same company that did the consulting and engineering on the original A S R well, and have them tell us, okay, here's the lessons we learned. Looking at your overall system, this is probably the best place to put your new A S R well. Here's the size we think you need. And also work with the permitting with T C U Q for that well.
You start, you would start a new well, then? We wouldn't use our existing wells?
We will use the existing well.
Okay.
We'll still use it, but we will start an additional well to begin our well field that we eventually plan to drill several wells within the, A S R wells within the city. But this would be the first full-blown dedicated A S R well. And then there was a small general sidewalk project for $50,000 that we're removing. In 2021, we'd add the North Street Phase 1, which we're moving from 2019. Add back Bridle Ridge Phase 2. Add the A S R well construction that we just talked about for $2.5 million. Reduce the seal coat maintenance again by $660,000, removing Gulf Coast Industrial Park, Deer Chase, Oak Haven, and Regency, and adding in Red River Heights. Move Bridle Ridge Phase 3 to 2022. Reduce the crack seal project from 500 to 300,000. When we started doing the math on what we could do for 500,000, that's probably more than the entire town. So we reduced it down to 300 to make it fit our needs a little better. And also move the Bon Air Street Utilities to start in 2022, along with Tanglewood Utilities. And then add in various utility street projects designed. And what we're doing there is we had some placeholders, namely Bon Air and Tanglewood, that we had in 2021. Those placeholders, while at the time they said construction, you still have to do the engineering for it. So the engineering for those projects will still be done in 2021. However, the construction will actually start in 2022, or is proposed to start in 2022, which would have really been, it's the same outcome. We're not really moving anything.
Is 2021 the first year that, when going back to the, one of the residential street programs that funds were going to be anticipated to start coming available?
Mayor, that's the revenue bonds in 2021.
Pardon?
The revenue bonds.
Yes.
We'll do the utilities first, and 2024, when we have the capacity to be, the street side of it.
Okay. I was just curious because I remember reading that, those timetables in there, and I was wondering, are we still on those timetables?
Okay, moving into 2022, we're going to add Bridle Ridge Phase 2. Reduce the seal coat again by moving some projects around. We'll move Vista Del Sol back one year to 2023. Add in the Tanglewood, I'm sorry, add in the utility projects we just mentioned, which includes Tanglewood, Bon Air, Airline, Lynn Thurman, and College Park. Notice that the first four are all phases. College Park will be done all at one time because it's a little bit smaller of a neighborhood. And then we'll add a 16-inch High Service Interconnect, which is one of those projects that I mentioned earlier that came from our water master plan update, was from 2018. It recommends that we do this 16-inch High Service Interconnect when our population is approaching 68,000. And so we should be there, maybe a little past it, by 2022. 2023, we'll add Vista Del Sol back in. Increase the seal coat maintenance this time by the 875,000 by removing the Boulevard and adding in Bell Tower. Bell Tower is a very large subdivision, and we were having a hard time making it fit. It fits this year, and so we're moving Boulevard to make it work out. Move the street construction phase of Guy Grant to 2024. This project is such a large project that we're phasing it. And the street, the utility side of it and the drainage ditch side of it, we're proposing to do in 2023. And the street and the sidewalk work will do in 2024.
Does that Guy Grant include any sidewalks?
Yes, sir, it does. That sidewalks would be done in 2024, and that includes an eight-foot hiking bike trail. Of course, we're looking to remove the Primrose Place utility projects and the Blue Ridge utility projects, where actually just the design, which were placeholders. We'll push those back to actually do design in 2024. Remove the Crestwood South also, which is a design project. And then add in the Tanglewood, Bon Air, and Lynn Thurman and Airline Terrace Phase 2 utility construction projects. Which brings us into our new plan year, so these are projects that you hadn't seen before. Seal Coat Project would add back in that Boulevard subdivision, which would catch all of the previous subdivisions that we had told you that we would, previously that we would get done. They get done. Boulevard's the last one. And then add Red River from Sam Houston to Ben Wilson. You'll notice that we're decreasing what we normally do on seal coat by quite a bit, about 1.3 million. And that is so that we can go in and do Springwood Subdivision, which has been pushed down the road for quite a while, and that's $2 million. Again, looking for another $300,000 crack seal project. Do the Phase 2 Guy Grant street reconstruction. And then do Tanglewood, the last phase of Tanglewood, utility construction Phase 3. And then immediately start doing the street reconstruction phases of Tanglewood, Bon Air, College Park, Lynn Thurman, and Airline Terrace. And at the same time, working on utility and street designs for Primrose Place, Crestwood South, and Blue Ridge Utility Street Design. The last one is additional High Service Pump at the Surface Water Treatment Plant. That is another one of those master plan update items. This one could probably be pushed out a little bit longer if it needed to because the population estimate on it, I think, is at 80,000. So we won't be there quite yet, but we'll be getting closer.
I have a question for Mr. Ringa. On the debt capacity side, again, in 2024, we talked about having debt capacity. In this scenario, have you used up all of that? Or will there still be some room to look at some M and O adjustments and not just debt capacity?
Councilman, you read my mind because from the last conversation we had, I need to get with Mr. Garza, go over the options that we're developing right now. There's options, because as you well know, we're not going to be able to sell $40 million within that timeframe for that year. We don't have the projects to do the 40. By law, I only can sell what I need instead of tax rate. But I need to get with Mr. Garza, lay out the options. I have Dusty with R B C working on my numbers, which I'm giving him a high number. He's cleaning it out for me. But I need to get with Mr. Garza, give him some options and present it to council. But from a general high level, you're looking at the possibility of possibly moving some pennies over to the M and O through the process. And there's a refund that I have talked to you about, that I'm planning to do, too, as well. I need to talk to Mr. Garza, which can create possible more capacity. Another option would be to, you're going to have a gap, what you sell and what you don't need. And one option, I'll throw it out there, is that maybe you want to pay off some old debt to create that capacity down the road, which creates more available funding or more possible to move money to the M and O side to create more for street maintenance. But again, that's from a high level. I need to get with Mr. Garza because I haven't had the opportunity to talk to him about that yet.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so if there's no questions on the changes that we're proposing, you can see from this graph that the total approved C I P projects for the last 10 years equals a little over, it's about $235.5 million. We're recommending with this plan, additional $135 million, which makes 370 million, 370.3 million through 2024. Available funding is estimated to be 420 million, which leaves unappropriated funding of $50 million. I do want to point out that even though it says that's unappropriate funding, that's through 2024, I want to point out that Primrose Place, Crestwood South, and Blue Ridge Utility Street Design projects are. I want to point out that, that Primrose Place, Crestwood South, and Blue Ridge Utility Street Design Projects are being phased. And so that may eat up some of that in the future, that 50 million, which is mostly bond. All right, so I will leave this up to the pleasure of council. We can go through all these projects if you'd like to. Or we can, I've got them down where we can talk just about the years, each year. Or we can just pick one here and there that y'all would like to discuss and however y'all would like to handle it. But there are a lot of projects.
Let's talk about the years.
Sure. So you want to go, which year are you looking at?
We'll look at 2020.
Okay. So there's a list of the projects that are out there. The Seal Coat Residential Streets, North Heights Phase Seven, ASR Project Assessment. Vine Street, Mockingbird to Red River, Crestwood Drive, Navarro to Main, that's Phase Three. And then Downtown Business District Overlay Project.
Let me ask a question. The amount of sales tax money that we're using, using Sales Tax Development Corporation money is lower than the average that we usually use. Is there more available?
To answer my question, answer to your question is that I have about over three, right now, $3.7 million in reserve. As from the last sales tax meeting, and this is one of the things we need to talk to you about, is that the Sales Tax Board would like to set some money aside to do some economic development project or just to have do some other projects. So to answer your question, there's more money set aside of $3.7 million towards, for the board's discretion, but that can, council can change that too as well. Does that answer your question, Mr. Counsel?
It does answer my question.
Thank you.
I'd like to talk about Dairy Road. It's on there for 2022 and it's rated 72. And it's a, it's in very bad shape. And kids walk down that road from the apartments up there and they walk down Salem and they go to the elementary school. There are no sidewalks. If this project was substituted for Crestwood from Main to Navarro, it, the sidewalks could be paid with CBG money and you'd have 500,000 left over. Crestwood from Main to Navarro, it says it's rated 57, but that rating was all the way down. There was no single rating for that. I've driven that street, there's one bad place. And don't get me wrong, all the, all the streets that are in here are bad, but Dairy Road is atrocious. It's a north-south road. You could get sidewalks for kids. Then you have $500,000. You could add another $500,000 and do Phase One of North Street, which was put off. That's a suggestion.
Or you could build my sidewalks on Leary Lane.
If we can do that with Sales Tax Corporation money, that'd be fine.
I don't think we can, I think we've had that problem.
That would be my suggestion. Dairy Road's in a lot worse shape. It's a north-south road. It's kids walk down it.
How many cars a day does Dairy Road carry versus Crestwood?
Well, first of all, most people don't go down it anymore because it's so bad.
Okay.
Dairy Road carries 1,751, while Crestwood, Navarro to Main carries 3,880.
Ian, I would like to see us finish out completely a project that we're going to start and finish Crestwood, finish Red River, finish these major thoroughfares that are used all the time. I agree with you, Dairy Road's in bad shape. It's not serving the community as often as Crestwood is.
It also relieves the traffic off of Navarro.
Leashes trafficked off of Navarro.
I will use it if you fix it. I use it now, but we play Mario Kart when we go down there. And you got to watch out for the kids.
Do you go faster when you go over Little Hump and it makes a little sound?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Do we do no maintenance to these streets in the interim at all?
No, we do maintenance.
Because Dairy, when I, at the intersection with Salem, I mean, it's like a rubble mess. I don't know if you could rebuild just at least 30 feet back into there or something on Dairy.
Dairy to Salem?
Where it intersects Salem.
Yeah, we, we can definitely take a look.
It's really just, I mean, I don't, it's not even a pothole anymore, it's just rubble.
It's, there are so many potholes that you can't just fill potholes. I mean, it's like, because they're, they're starting to work together. I understand you want to complete a project, but that's, Crestwood's in a lot better shape. There's one bad place where you, when, if you're going north on Main and you turn onto Crestwood, there's one bad place, which could be fixed. But Dairy Road, the whole road is bad. Plus, it would free up money that if we add some other money, we could do another project. We could maybe even do, if we had enough money, we could do Dairy Road and Crestwood.
Is that, is that true about the CDBG funds can be used for the?
It's a collector, it's a thoroughfare.
So CDBG funds can be used for infrastructure projects, but I think there's a misunderstanding how much we actually have available. Our allotment for this next year is approximately 562,000. We hold back 20% of that to pay for the admin expenses. And then if we were to cut out, we, we hold back another 15% for our public service agency grants. So if we're wanting to use our entire allotment on a, an infrastructure project, we would have to figure out how we would pay for the admin. And then we would also be cutting out all of those grants to our public service agencies. So realistically, we typically have about 300, this year, we'll have about 365,000 to fund our other CDBG initiatives. And so that could all go towards a public infrastructure project. But I do also know that we will be receiving some public facility requests and other types of initiatives that we've got in the plan. So it would take some amendments.
In fact, CBG money was used for sidewalks on Salem Road that go all the way to Dairy Road. And then there's no sidewalks that go down Dairy Road.
And you're saying the apartments use that because there's sidewalks on John Stock?
They walk down the middle of the road, basically.
There, there are sidewalks, I guess, on Stockbauer, which is the other side of those, that apartment complex.
Well, once you get past the bridge, that's all been redone. Hoover and that has sidewalks, it's nice. It's a big contrast. It's very nice.
But you're right, there's sidewalks along John Stockbauer on the side of that complex that can be fully utilized and walk down the sidewalk down Salem.
Actually, there's not sidewalks all the way down Salem. There's, there's some gaps from Dairy Road to, not a whole lot. There are some gaps.
Thought we filled in those.
I guarantee you, there's some gaps. I live in that neighborhood. But not a lot of gaps, you're right, not a lot of gaps. And they could walk that way, but people don't, kids don't walk that way. They walk the shortest way to school. They don't, they don't go a mile out of their way to go to school.
I'm for completing Crestwood all the way through. I think once the project is started, I'd like it.
So we're going to tear up Crestwood all the way at the same time? Because this other project won't start and then we'll tear up that part of Crestwood too, right?
It's in three phases. First phase being over Ben Jordan to Laurent. We're in design right now, already let for Laurent to Navarro. And then it'll go from Navarro to Main. Starting, I'm guessing that the, go out for design in October, November for that last section.
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure.
If we keep this plan because it's in that budget.
If we follow the same plan, yeah, that should be right.
And Crestwood will be done. Red River's getting ready to start soon. It's going to be done. We have Laurent done.
There's part of.
Need North done.
I'm, I'm kind of in favor of, of sticking with, with that too, with the Crestwood that's already going. And Tanglewood is my favorite. If we're going to move anything, it would be move up Tanglewood. And I have to say, hats off to staff. They continue to get into those streets that have problems and they do maintain, maintain the potholes or, you know, fill them in. And, and I've driven Dairy Road plenty myself and they do an awful lot of filling in those potholes. And yes, we get a rain and they have to go back again, but both Dairy and Guy Grant, they just, they stay on top of those potholes. And it's all we can do until the money is available.
Could we possibly look at, at, at that intersection?
Absolutely.
See if there could be a, a more permanent type solution that could come in there for the appropriate distance.
Sure.
Because I mean, it is really bad.
I understand.
I mean, think you could stripe it, it's so.
Yeah, I've got a note on it. We'll, we'll look at it for a possible failure, maybe, and that may be the way to handle it, is dig it out as a failure.
Right.
And redo the base.
But, but it would, if, if it can be done to where it could be incorporated into a permanent solution later, I'm not too much in favor of spending a lot of money to just be torn out.
True.
But could you, could you give some options there?
Sure, sure. You know, as long as it's not too big of an area, we, we do road failures with our own crews. And it's just that I don't have a lot of crew to, to do a whole lot of road failures. So we do them as, as fast as we can, but I can definitely look at that one.
Perhaps at another meeting, bring back, you know, kind of a sidewalk deal of that area.
Sure.
Where we can look at Mr. Lufkin's concerns there.
I also have a concern about the streets we're reconstructing in 2020. You've got Crestwood and Bridal Ridge, not that they don't need to be fixed after we did some damage to them. But their ratings are in the 80s. And like on 2023, there's Vista Del Sol, which is 74. There's Lone Tree Acres, which is 76. I've driven all those streets. I drove Woodway. Woodway needs some help on Chimney Rock, but Woodway's got wide streets with very few potholes. Vista Del Sol is narrow streets with potholes in the middle and people park on the sides of the street. It would seem to me that Vista Del Sol and Lone Tree Acres could be substituted for for what's being done in year 21 for Bridal Ridge, Woodway. And it would make more sense. You talked about your criteria was street ratings and.
That's part of the, part of the criteria, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So are we done with 2020?
No. Well, yeah, I, I would like to change that to those. I'd like 20, those ones that are, that are 74 and 76 be moved to 2020.
For what?
For Bridal Ridge and Woodway. Explain to me why Woodway and Bridal Ridge need to be redone right away when they're rated in the 80s? And we've got two subdivisions that are in the 70s. It could be done.
Look at that fiscal year 2020 list again?
Sure.
And maybe also go back to the very beginning where you kind of list out the different, just as a refresher on all the different items that go into account in the recommendation? Because it's not just the street condition score, it's a variety of different items. Now, if the council as a whole, and I'm not trying to open a can of worms or keep us here for another hour, but if, if the council as a whole wants to change their policy position on how staff develops this list of recommendation, then that's something completely different. So if the council direction or policy direction is to solely make the recommendations based off of the street rating alone, well, then that would be the policy direction to staff so that as this list is presented to staff, I'm sorry, as the list is presented by staff, it's consistent with your expectation and your policy direction. But in the absence of an update to that policy direction, the staff recommendation is based on all these items.
As I said earlier, I am not an engineer. But I would make a guess, and really this is a question, that as we, if we look at Woodway and Bridal Ridge, if we repair them now, is there an assumption that the cost would be less than if we put them off till they get to the condition of my Tanglewood?
It, it's going to depend on, it's going to depend on the market at the time, but of, of course, the worse the roads get, yeah, you're going to, you're going to have more cost. You know, one of the reasons that, that Woodway and Bridal Ridge are up at the top, you made a comment about, Councilman, about doing them right away. They have, they have been pushed back several years as well as a lot of these other projects have. You know, people who are on council have seen that, I'm sure you've seen that. So we're not just jumping them on right away. It's, it's not something that we're trying to speed through, but they were ones that, that through, through nobody's fault except for, for Public Works, we, we decided to go ahead and do a seal coat, a double seal on those streets without doing the proper testing, you know, several years ago. And those streets got to be in the way they are because of, because of us. So we're trying to move up and, and get those streets repaired and take ownership of that problem. I'll also say that one of the reasons that Woodway is up a little bit higher is that Woodway carries more traffic through it as well than some of the neighborhoods that, that you did. There is a, it, it, it carries quite a bit of traffic because of the school that, that cuts through there. And if you're going to, if you're going to re, just redo that one street and then you're going to come back later on and, and start building in phases, then with all the truck traffic that you're going to have and heavy equipment traffic that you're going to have going back over that street that you just rebuilt, you're going to damage it. So the best way to do Woodway is to start in the back and do it in phases, back, middle, front, and get out of there in three years. And, and, and that's why Woodway is where it is.
And the original residential street plan Vista Del Sol was supposed to be done in 2020. And Woodway did not have a problem then. Now Woodway has a problem and we're putting, Vista Del Sol has potholes in the middle of the street that are craters. They're not potholes, they're craters. And it needs its, it needs new gutters, it's got grass growing out. I understand that all the streets need to be fixed in here, but their streets are really, really bad. Woodway, there's a part in Phase Three, which is the last phase, which is the worst part of Woodway.
I agree.
And that's already being put off a year, but two years. I just seems to me that we should be fixing these streets that are so bad that people can't drive down the street before we fix. Woodway's got wide streets, nobody parks on the street, there's very few potholes. You're, you're replacing the street, not the curbs. These other, Vista Del Sol needs new curbs. It would seem to me that they should be fixed bef, I'm not saying that Woodway and Bridal Ridge shouldn't be fixed, but they should, I think these other streets have low ratings and should be moved up.
As I mentioned it earlier, this is a plan and plans are meant to be changed. So if that's the will of the council, we'll, by all means, we'll, we'll do, we're happy to do it.
Well, I'd like to know what the rest of the council thinks.
Can you clarify the streets in Lone Tree Acres? I've been all back in there, but I want to just clarify the streets.
Lone Tree Acres, I believe, is?
Twenty.
Tibbaldity?
2023.
2023, let me find that.
Ike, Anthony, page, page 67.
Just want to make sure how this, because I've been back there several times.
Tibbaldity, Massou.
Ike.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong year, aren't I?
It should be Ike and Lone Tree.
Tibbaldity, Massou.
Morris.
Morris.
Thurman.
All right. I just wanted to make sure I was on the right track here. At the end of Ike and Tibbaldity, the drainage, the drainage creek back in that open field of where you see that N, indicating north. That creek was not cleaned, cleaned out for years.
Correct.
And it caused a lot of flooding on Ike, Massou, Tibbaldity, and Morris. So much that the BISD school buses have trouble navigating that road, especially after a heavy rain. There is a lot of street damage at the end of Tibbaldity and Ike and Massou. I too believe that requires a little more attention sooner than other additions. So I'd like to make, I'd like to see you review that and if possible, I'll move it up. It's, it's not very big. There's a lot of traffic back there, so if you could take that into consideration, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
In response to your comment, Mr. De La. In response to your comment, Mr. De La Garza, I think that road may have been the subject of one of the task force meetings at V I S D attend that was looking at transportation issues. And it was kind of that same issue brought up. I think that's the road. It might be well to touch base with, with the transportation people at V I S D and ask about that road. There is one in particular. I know that it's, it's a real concern to the school district.
We were just out there recently, made a lot of point repairs out there, but we can definitely.
And y'all were.
We can definitely look at moving that up and, and I'm assuming you're wanting to maybe try to move that to 2020, 2021 or just.
2021 would be nice.
Well, if, if I may suggest, I think this, this is a meeting to, to exchange ideas and thoughts. So I would suggest with, we, we hear everybody's thoughts and concerns and possibly come back to another work session in a couple of weeks with, with your responses.
Right.
To the, to these.
You gotta know what the impacts are if you.
Yeah, know, and know what the impacts are and, and have a little bit more time for you to, to, you know, share that. I do think, and I could be wrong, I think the, the city, I mean, the public kind of, you know, everybody knows you have a rating system, you know, that they're rated. I don't think the public is in general knowledge of all the other factors that come into these decisions too. So as a matter of, of public information, it might be good to, when we present these and we discuss their positions again, that we talk more in terms of these other factors that are considered. I think it's well known that perhaps, you know, we're not going to rebuild a road that, and come back and redo the utilities under it.
Right.
I think that's it. But the other more, the other decisions in this is traffic counts and all of that. I don't think that the public's is, is attuned to that.
Some of, some of these, like for example, Lone Tree Acres, I, I won't have a traffic count. There's, there's just not.
Well, I, I understand, but the ones you do, I mean, because you mentioned it, so that becomes part of the decision-making process that I think we all need to understand. So I, I think if we could do this, if we could kind of go through our list of concerns and then we come back to another work session and not, not, you know, delay on it, but, but make a concerted effort to talk about these in broader terms and things. And then finance would have time to talk more about the funding availabilities and impacts like we were educated to a few moments ago. And, and I think within a very short time, we can kind of come to a consensus where everybody understands, you know, how these decisions are made and that, and that we who have to take the calls about the potholes are in a better position to, to answer the public. Cause we're gonna be spending a lot of money. And, and to your point too, Mr. Walt Knight about, you know, some of this, as we move into further years, we may be thinking of different ways to fund these projects as well. So I think I, I see it as us starting a process of just more learning from one another as we move, move down this load because heaven knows we got a lot of work to do. If that makes sense, that's.
I have, I have one more question about seal coating.
Sure.
How do you determine, you and I had this discussion, but maybe you could clarify for everybody here.
Okay.
How do you determine which neighborhoods you pick? Because like I drove all the neighborhoods and I think Bel Air and Green in one year, they're, they're pushed off, they were pushed off from the previous C I P and they have low ratings. And I, I drove, I drove in Bell Tower and Bell Tower, most Bell Towers, it's got a low rating, but there's parts of it that are really bad. And I was wondering, can you still seal code it down the road if it's bad now? Now, a lot of it's in good shape.
Right.
But there's a part in the northeast section that's a lot worse than the rest of Bell Tower.
Yeah, we're, when we're looking at those streets, we're, again, like you said, we're kind of thinking in the future and, and how have these streets progressed on, are they getting worse and worse and worse drastically each year? Are they just kind of getting the normal wear and tear? And we'll look out and we'll try to project, okay, yeah, this street could go a little bit longer. This street could go a little bit longer. Ken has a list of the seal coats that we've done over the last 20 years or 20 years. And looking through that list and saying, okay, this street hasn't had anything done to it in several years. It's a prime candidate. Look at the rating and the ratings in the, in the low to mid nineties. That's a perfect candidate for a seal goat, seal coat, cause it's a good street and we want to keep it good. So.
And that's the reason I bring up Bell Tower, cause Bell Tower is 87 and.
Yeah.
The other one was 84.
Right.
And they're.
Right.
Few years down the road and we have, we're doing a lot of them that are in the nineties, 92, 93, 90, some of 98.
Yeah, and that's, that's where our, kind of our visual inspections come in. You've got to remember that we have humans doing the, the, the street inventory. And so when we go out and look at it, Ken and I may think, okay, well, yeah, that's a, you know, it's rated in the street inventory is this, but, but you know, from a visual, walking, standing inspection and we, we think it's better. The, the base looks like it's better than what the inventory says it is. So we make a decision based on some visual also.
And also as part of the crack seal maintenance program, I recall the neighborhood that's across from Victoria East across Mockingbird.
Yes.
We had to do some base rehab in that when we went through the testing. So sometimes when it is impossible to crack seal or to seal coat some of that, it, it gets a base rehab in some locations too.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not gonna say we're perfect. Sometimes we miss the mark and, and you know, that's kind of what happened on Woodway and.
How often do you test the streets?
We test the streets every year.
Every year?
The ones, the ones that we're planning on doing, we'll go out and dig them up and, and just take a, a soil sample and.
With the ones like Bell Tower and has it been tested?
No, no, it hasn't been tested. Not, not this year. It hadn't been tested.
And I have one other question and I won't ask any more questions, but.
You should ask, ask all the questions you need to.
Oh, thank you. Castle Hills West and Tonto Circle were on the original residential street plan. And they have not been mentioned in the C I P or the debt capacity reports. And I want to know why they have not been.
Okay. That was one we talked about earlier today as well. Now let's talk about Tonto Circle first.
Very small.
It's very small and one of the reasons that its, street rating is so low is because the majority of that neighborhood has streets that are 15 foot wide. So that automatically kind of just gives it a low rating. It does have some alligator cracking on it, but overall it's in pretty good shape. It's just, it's just real narrow is why. And there's very, very low traffic count.
What about Castle Hills West?
Castle Hills West, it, it definitely needs some work. That's no doubt about it. But when you're looking at other needs and compared to some other street ratings, traffic, I mean, traffic counts, not street ratings, but traffic counts. You know, for example, Woodway has a, a higher traffic count than, than Castle Hills West. Frankly, so we're, you know, we're, we're juggling kind of those, those criteria and we're looking and.
Well, Castle Hills West, King Arthur runs through Castle Hills West.
And that's the road.
Most of it's rated in the seventies.
Yeah.
And if that street could be repaired somehow, people could get in and out of the neighborhood on. It's, that street is really bad.
And, and it is, I agree with you. It is bad. Again, you know, that's a larger neighborhood and it kind of lends itself to phasing. And if you, King Arthur's really the only way in and out of that neighborhood. So if you do that and then come back at a later date, you're driving those heavy equipment and, and dirt trucks and right over the road you just built. So it, from an engineering standpoint, it, it just doesn't make sense to do it like that. You know, if, if, if that's one you want to move, then I think that's the way it ought to be done. You ought to, you ought to move it to an earlier, you know, move it up in, in the, and not, not try to just do it piecemeal. Need to phase it and do it right.
My thing is, it's, it's not even, it's not even, I don't see it anywhere as a project and.
Again, this is, this is just a plan. If there's one that y'all want to talk about moving up, I'm, I'm all for it. I'm, I'm game. I'm, we're gonna, we're gonna build what you ask.
Mr. Lofkin, was it not in that debt capacity study?
It was in the original street plan and it was supposed to be done in 2020, same as Vista del Sol. And it, I have a thing here. It was on a C I P to be done in 2020. And it got pushed off. And it, people would just like to get in and out of, I live there. I'd like to get in and out of the neighborhood without driving through.
We've talked about it a long time together.
You're saying it was on in prior years?
When the original street plan was done and the, and the C I Ps were done afterwards, it was on the C I P for 2020. In 2015, it was on the C I P for 2020. It got kicked off and was never put back on. It was never put on the next C I P, which went out to, you know, in the next few. It's been ignored and the bad part is the total rating for it is 82, which is a lot lower than, and you can go by traffic counts all you want. People used to go through, use King Arthur as a cut through. They don't use it anymore because it's so bad. And they used to use Dairy Road. It's so bad. So now they're actually using Guy Grant, which is good. That's what it was intended for. But it is nowhere to be seen and it's bad. I came down here in 2013 originally and sat in my seat out there, which should have a plaque on it, by the way, because I wanted my streets fixed. And it's disappeared. I know there's a lot, I've driven all these other streets and there's a lot of them that need to be fixed. But Castle Hills West needs to be fixed. People need to be able to get in and out and go somewhere. And I don't see it anywhere.
Is that the only one that was missing? Did you mention?
Well, Tonto Circle was, you know, there were, I'd have to go back and look. And I'm sure there's other housing developments that maybe they don't have on their list. But a lot of them did get put on there. And I agree with Tonto Circle. It's just, there's nothing to it. Okay? But it, it never got put on the list either. I did notice those two because we were right together at one time. I can go back and look, but I'd like to know what housing developments need to be done now. Because it was supposed to be done in 2020 originally. And I understand the original plan was based on borrowing money and we couldn't borrow, we had some down years and we didn't do the reconstruction like we did, but it's just fallen off to the wayside and it needs to be done.
I'm just wondering if it's one of those that like Springwood showed up this year, if it's one of those.
Springwood was another one.
That's likely to show up next year on the 2025 or something along those lines.
But originally.
Well, again, let's find it and bring it back to another work session.
Sure.
In the 2015.
2015 C I P.
Is what may have happened to it.
Yeah. Well, as the, as the mayor suggests, give us an opportunity to kind of just take the feedback that we're receiving tonight and we'll gladly look at what options and just come back and just continue the conversation.
Cause I am not adverse to work sessions if they're productive. And I think it's an opportunity for us to really have really direct conversations on these issues so that the public really understands because we've, we've kind of, there's a public expectation where I think they want to see a lot of dust flying and, and work happening and we need to get to it as quickly as possible as, as, as the funds allow it. So that's my two cents worth.
I'm not sure that they want to see dust fly. So let's be careful about the bid specs that we do.
That something's happening.
Just to keep it kind of grounded, we've talked about Tanglewood for a number of years.
Yes.
What's the total crawl cost with utilities and roads?
On Tanglewood?
Well over 12 million?
Over Tanglewood?
Yeah, Ken, do you have that number total?
I can probably find it in here somewhere, right?
I'd have to add them all.
It's in phases and so you have to add up quite a few of them. The first construction phase is in 2022. The design phase is in 21.
You got, do you have them all together?
And then it's in 22, 23 and 24.
But it's somewhere between 12 and 15 million?
It, it's, I was thinking it's around 13 million total between streets and utilities.
Right. So I just, I mean, it sounds easy to say, let's go fix something. But it's also coming up with 12 to 15 million dollars for one neighborhood. And if you look at Guy Grant, Guy Grant's 10 million plus just to fix that one, stretch a road with utilities and sidewalks, curb and gutter. So these aren't small numbers we're talking about and they add up quickly, even though we talk about a huge debt capacity that we might have you know, close to 100 million. I don't know, 100 million doesn't go far in this street and utility world anymore.
But, but. But we have to know the reality that we're facing.
Yeah. And but, that being said, these roads that we are constructing are just such a better standard that, I mean, further down the road, people will benefit from having them. They won't have the same construction standards that are out there right now that we're trying to replace. And so it'll be good. It's just, it's frustrating to sit up here and not be able to have the money to go fix Tanglewood, fix Guy Grant, fix Dairy, fix Crestwood, fix Castle Hills West. All those just, it, can't find the money.
Donald, previously, we've had discussions in regard to, I think, philosophically looking at how we do roads in regards to asphalt versus concrete versus cost differential. And I know those cost differentials has changed over time.
It has gotten a lot closer, yes, sir.
As it's gotten a lot closer, should we be looking at doing more concrete versus some of this that's, that's stated in here? Because if I understand correctly, let's say 35 years down the road, when that asphalt road is, will the concrete, can we then turn asphalt over that concrete as a cost savings?
Yeah, I think that, that when you're looking at thoroughfares, absolutely the way to go is concrete. When you're thinking about residential streets and you're looking at a true 30-year hot mix street, it's kind of, it's kind of up in the air which way to go. You know, you're looking at lightweight traffic, not typically not high volume. So you're, you get a lot more life out of that, that hot mix street than you would normally. But definitely on, and this is something for council to consider at a later date. I, I do feel strongly that we ought to have a, a minimum standard of concrete streets in new subdivisions. But that's something.
Well, I, I absolutely concur. I know I, I ask if there's no cost differential between even a neighborhood street or if it's, it's close and you're not having to do the continued maintenance that we're sitting here fighting about. We're not fighting, we're discussing about, I choose my words carefully. And the problems that we've had associated with maintenance. The, 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 I guess the pain in the rump that it puts people through. It's been the shelling of, of everything that we've gone through and the, the constant complaints, even though I think that it ends up being a good product, but even to void that with concrete, is that a possibility?
It is a possibility. If, if council would like us to, we could start looking at estimating costs on some of these projects, these subdivision projects, residential, residential street projects in concrete.
I'd be interested to know what that is versus the value of the continued maintenance that we have every 7.5 years. To, to find out, is there a true value in, in, in doing it now so that we're not putting it on future councils as well?
It's a great idea. We can do that.
A lot of that has to do with the utilities under those streets too. When you design concrete in a new subdivision, you can get your utilities out from under the street to the extent you can so that you don't have utilities go bad under concrete, cause it costs more to cut through concrete to repair them.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, so there's a whole, that's what I'm getting back to. There's a whole host of things that they will take into account.
Yeah, but I was.
I think the general consensus is to the extent we can, and it makes sense that we might want to look at, at moving to concrete when it makes sense.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Yeah, for every one of these utility, I mean, we're doing the utilities and coming over and doing the roads. I'd, I'd much prefer to see a concrete if it was possible.
While, while we're talking about that, I've, I've seen several neighborhoods, not in Victoria, but in other places that, where there's an intersection between the entrance. where there's an intersection between the entrance to the neighborhood and the adjoining thoroughfare or even just intersections of two streets. The, the roads may be asphalt, but they've been, it's like a pad of concrete.
Right.
Um, I'm sure that there's a big cost to doing that because you're, it's a small project. But if you're, you know, doing estimates, I'd be curious about that. For instance, Dairy Road that we're talking about and how it's falling apart there in the end. And Guy Grant, the same thing when it comes to Mockingbird, that's because of all the vehicles stopping and just kind of a thought.
The reality is that, to it is whether you put asphalt on a street or whether you put concrete, where you need to spend the money is in the sub base and the drainage. Because that's what's going to make a street last. And because I've seen some in, in Houston subdivisions that were put in where the moisture actually made the concrete street do this. So it's not just the, where you want to spend the money is the preparation of your bases and your sub grades.
And I understand that's what our new specs are.
Right, that's where, that's where they need to be tightened up.
Yep.
Do you know if the, um, Ben Wilson is going to be concrete?
Uh, Ben Wilson? No, no ma'am. Talking about the Ben Wilson corridor or for?
For the university?
That'd be hot mix.
Hmm, okay. Well, I guess it'll be a faster way to fix it if something goes wrong.
Got a what?
And on the surface, I'm not real sure where all the utilities are under, under Ben Wilson. And, uh, you know, we, that's something that mayor mentioned. You know, if you've got the utilities underneath that road, uh, even though they're going to be new, you really need to think long term. And it's, it's very difficult to repair utilities under concrete.
Right, I understand.
And, and, and when I saw in reviewing that contract too, there's a lot of their, uh, things like, uh, cabling for infrastructure and stuff for the university that they may or may have to go through there. And you don't know what the extent of that's going to be as well, uh, to it. So there's some logic in, in, in using asphalt because you may have to cut it out or something to get to a major repair of those or, or upgrade of those. So there's some things, there's some things you can bore under a street easily and then there's things that you, it's more difficult.
Again, you'll be back to your thirty-year design and you're taking it down from five, having to rebuild five lanes to just rebuilding two lanes. So the, the long-term cost is not nearly as bad.
Any, any more items too?
I would, especially if we're looking at all these things again, Leary Lane's another one that's council and councils before. When I came on, they said they'd been talking about it for thirteen years. This is my, end of my fourth year, so that makes it seventeen years this council's been talking about it. We had Leary Lane in the budget for twenty-twenty and then we changed it and it's dropped off this completely. It's in an alternate project. So I would like to challenge council to see if we can find a way to get that sidewalk project back on the books too.
Good point.
I would like the challengers to find a design that doesn't cost six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for a four-foot, five-foot sidewalk.
I agree. They got it down from six hundred and seventy.
There, I just don't see it. Can you do it in price per square foot?
Can we build the road at the same time?
Since we're kind of in alternate projects, I think it's important that I at least bring to your attention a, a few projects we've added to this alternate needs pro, list. Uh, the first one is this Vine Wagner Way, Lingle and Magruder reconstruction. Uh, first phase would be, uh, US eighty-seven, uh, Vine Street from Wagner Way, from Vine Street and Wagner Way from US eighty-seven to the railroad tracks. Uh, you know, this would be built a little bit heavier because of the, uh, traffic from the concrete plant. And we'd actually, uh, coming across their driveways into their other lots, we'd recommend putting concrete crossings, basically. That's about four hundred and sixty-five thousand. And then the second phase would be railroad, from the railroad to the country club, uh, about two hundred and seventy thousand. Again, this is a hot mix. And then Spring Creek Road reconstruction. If you remember, this road was supposed to be, uh, have a double seal when we did, uh, Country Club. And when we got in there and did the, uh, testing on the, uh, base, it was rotten. And we were afraid that if we did this road the same way, we'd run into the same problems we had with, uh, Woodway and Bridle Ridge. So we backed out of this and we're currently, currently looking for a way to put this con, this project back in. And if this is something that, uh, council sees as a priority, let us, let us know and we'll definitely try harder.
So this costs almost ten percent more than a sidewalk?
Yeah.
The way you know, if she just take a bit. But part of that road, part of that roadway too gets submerged a lot in flooding. Yeah. Or at least, at least take that into consideration, the type of road, because water is the enemy of all roadways.
Yeah, absolutely. And then the final, final project we added was the reconstruction of Ben, Benchmark Alley. Uh, just consists of removing the existing broke-up concrete and going back in with, uh, limestone base and six inches of reinforced concrete. Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then the last item I have is some other needs that have, that have come up that, uh, city council has not seen before. The first one is a public safety facility, phase one, which would be a gun range. It's, uh, nine point seven million. This is the overall site for the entire project, which is not on here. But that building number one, the top left, would be the, uh, proposed, uh, gun range area. Uh, if you need any more information on that, uh, the chief is here to talk about it.
Will that be available for birthday rentals?
Revenue, revenue sources, right? Next one is a fire station, number five relocation. Currently there is a fire, uh, fire station five is sitting next to the Citizens Health Plex on four sixty-three. A while back, we bought some land on, uh, at three oh two Kerth, uh, down the road. And, uh, at some point, uh, uh, we were, fire department would like to move that, uh, fire station over there, build a new one for three point five million.
Just curiosity sake, do you have a, this market value of that property right there?
Uh, I can tell you what we paid for it.
No, right now. I mean, it seems like we're at all-time high appraisals. It might be a good time where you can sell, like fund that other one.
I can look that up in a heartbeat. What, what would the existing, because that was a fire and EMS facility when it was first done. What would be the uses of that facility if you relocated it?
The new facility, the new fire station?
No, if, I understand you're going to abandon this or just build another one?
No, that would be abandoned as Mr. Rana said, we would sell that property.
So you would sell it. There's no other use for the city for that, for that facility?
We'd obviously look at some possible uses, but as for the fire department, there would be no other use for that.
Why couldn't we use it as a PD, what is it, substation or something?
Substation or something.
Repurpose the building and then we could put the production studio in there too. That VTV.
And have new council chambers.
Be closer for me.
Further for me.
No, that's.
I just think all the options should be like, what it might could be used for.
Well, and also for the council, just as a point of reference, uh, I mean, one of the things that I'll be looking at is just overall, just city facilities as a whole. Um, I've begun having conversations with different directors and I've already seen a consistent theme with the reality that we just have a lot of old facilities, not only just for police and fire, but for everybody. And so, um, obviously this is under an alternative list, so it's not even in the planning period. And so that gives us plenty of time to holistically look at all of our facility needs, not just with public safety, but with everybody. So that we can then have a true discussion about what the facility needs are for the, for the city as a whole. But that's down the line. Um, but I just want to throw that out there because, um, I do think it's important for us to take our time in, in just doing facility assessments and, um, having a holistic approach to facilities as a city, uh, as part of that.
That's why I like the concept of long-range comprehensive planning.
Oh, I know where that is.
Just, just off the top of my head. Um, there had been a discussion a few years ago about the deer population in town. Is that something that can be addressed in the capital improvements plan or is that a? There, there was, for the new council members, um, we have a lot of deer. I don't think we've dealt with it yet. And the deer population is increasing and there was an expense involved with trying to reduce that population.
Yeah, I, I think that, uh, Darrell and I would address that for you for no cost.
I was actually going to ask Mr. Garja, we had talked about it, uh, a while ago, partnering up with Texas Parks and Wildlife and having some, uh, youth weekend archery hunts in, in Riverside Park.
Well, I, I just wondered if it was something that was appropriate for this or if it's more a general fun kind of an expense or. And I'm, the finance guy is saying it's more general fun, so we'll talk about it another time.
I mean, unless you, unless you want to build a facility for, for, for the deer.
Then we could talk about the market value of deer leases.
Sorry, I've been here too long, my jokes are beginning to come out.
Getting a little giddy. So if we, has everybody pretty much covered what they wish to cover tonight?
The only thing, I wanted to say something about the station seven, and I know it's very theoretical and everything, but that station location looks just like five. It's on a one-way.
Oh, yeah, it, it, once again, it's just a theoretical, you know, throw the, throw the dart on the map and it's a general area, just like station six. You know, that ideal location was closer to Navarro off of Glasgow, which, you know, in reality, we couldn't put it there. So once again, that is, yeah, that is not the exact spot where we, or the best spot where we need to go. So the, the only other item on this list is a, uh, VTV fifteen TV production space. Purchased a small building downtown, uh, to be used for AV projects, audio projects, uh, about three hundred thousand dollars. And that money would come from PEG funds. Uh, and this is again, a, uh, a conceptual idea, um, OC brought forward and we put it on here in the other needs. And if you've got questions about it, he can, he can address those.
Got plenty of space downtown, so have your pick.
Yeah, if you can get it for that price.
So that is all that I have. And, uh, I know we had a lot of discussion and questions, so I'm assuming most of those got addressed. And, uh, I think we have some direction, uh, for, uh, twenty-twenty and twenty-one, twenty-one to come back with y'all. And, uh, you said two weeks, but I may need a little bit more time than that, uh, if that's okay and, and.
Well, when you're ready, I mean, you'll, you make that.
Sure, yeah, we'll discuss and we'll.
Mr. Garza and I will look at that.
I'd like to point out too, if this meeting would have started at six, it'd be nine PM.
Is that past your bedtime?
It is, yes. Sorry, I'm still a growing boy.
From a guy who's attended school board meetings for over forty years, this is a short meeting.
That's okay, we're not really looking to change that.
I think we got good work done.
Well, thank y'all very much.
So, not hearing any other business, I don't think you have a city manager's report because we already passed you up.
Thank you. So the only, the only thing I was going to say was that I look forward to working with everybody and, uh, I'm excited about it. So I look forward to collaborating with you and just taking a holistic approach to the operation of the city to just, uh, hopefully, uh, make it better. So, thank you.
So found it this time. So that's, we are now adjourned.